Please rise as you're able.
Recording in progress.
All right, hello, welcome everyone. As always, it's nice to have a full room of concerned and interested constituents. So thanks for being here tonight for our December 4th city council meeting. As I usually say, we are here as council with one council member over at the end. But we do continue to have members of the public and members of staff joining virtually. So I do toggle back and forth between our Zoom screen and those of you in person. So just give me a little grace as I do that. And then we do take breaks approximately every 90 to 120 minutes as needed between items. So with every meeting, we begin with an open comment period. And this is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to speak on an item that we are not taking a public hearing for later in the agenda. We are implementing our new rule of two minutes per speaker for a total of up to 20 minutes to allow more speakers to have a chance to speak. And just note that I keep track of time through a couple of different methods. I have a little stoplight system here, and I think it'll turn yellow at 30 seconds. And then we have a two-minute clock on the wall. And I will give you a warning, so just don't be offended if I need to cut you off. We just need to stay within our rules and make sure as many people as possible have a chance to speak. On that note, I just ask that you are indeed concise, that your comments are addressed to me as the presiding officer, as council president. And we invite you to share feedback, but of course, ask that you are respectful in doing so. And a new statement that I'd like to make tonight is that participants are encouraged to limit your comments generally to topics within the scope and jurisdiction of the city's ability to affect policy. We don't respond directly during open comment, but if there are items to follow up on, just make sure that the clerk has your information and either staff or an appropriate council member will get back to you. I do take a look at who is joining virtually or ask that the clerk does, and I'm not on Zoom yet. So I will take a second to sign in and make sure that anybody who's joining virtually has a chance to speak as well within our time. So we will go ahead and get started, and I will log into Zoom. But in the meantime, invite Fletcher Hines to come up. And Mr. Hines, you'll have two minutes. And we will start when you start talking, but please introduce yourself.
I'll have to talk fast.
Yep.
I am here representing Isaiah, and I'd just like to start by thanking you all for meeting with members of Isaiah over the past couple of months to explore some of our ideas on sustainability. That's been really an incredible learning experience for us and hopefully for you too. We're just here, I'm here encouraging this city to expand its presence and participation in community-wide sustainability efforts. And one way of doing this is, I think you'll be talking about little haters, by capturing currently available Inflation Reduction Act money and facilitating the distribution of this money through homeowners' tax credits and rebates to contractors and commercial providers. I'd also like to thank the city staff and the newly created Sustainability and Resiliency Commission for researching proposed ways to make our ideas happen. I think we need to plan for a future without fossil fuels. Transition from fossil fuels to renewables will be an ongoing and multi-layered process over the next coming years. And one layer of this is to reduce the amount of fossil fuel consumption wherever and whenever possible. And by voting yes tonight on expanding sustainability resources in the city budget, we can attack this consumption reduction layer locally in an immediate, direct, and measurable way. I'd like to thank you again as elected officials for working with local citizens to make Rochester, which is already a great place to live and even greater place to work. And we urge you to vote yes tonight for sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this goes without saying, but please do silence your phones. All right. What, I figured it might be yours, so. All right, if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine if you're interested in speaking, and it looks like we do have somebody in the queue. So Amir Rosenbaum, you are welcome to unmute yourself and introduce yourself. You have two minutes. And we can't hear you yet. Can you try one more time to unmute yourself or mute yourself and then unmute yourself? All right, we will move on, and I will try again later. We do have a couple of people with their hands up. So Dave Riker. Introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
I'm Dave Riker, council president. I just wanted to add my thanks to the council administration for coming up with a couple of steps and ways to improve our sustainability coverage in the city. That's great. We are desperately behind in our greenhouse gas reductions. So any effort is good. The agenda packet contained an impressive amount of detail, but I thought the concept of the request was fairly simple, which just use the IRA funding to help the city, right? Bring our tax money back and generate greenhouse gas reductions here. The request is very small, really, $100,000 would be 0.0167% or something like that. Rather a small amount of money compared to the $600 million you'll be talking about later. One remark about the request, as stated in the packet, it talks about providing information just to individuals. I thought the concept that was presented before was to make sure that everybody, whether it's large business, small business, contractors, landlords, yada, yada, nonprofits, right? All of those groups should be made aware that there might be funds out there, excuse me, for them to use. So I hope you consider that small change. There was also a list of expenditures labeled environment, economy, social in there. The list was interesting, but it did make me wonder about the city goals attached to those expenditures. The greenhouse gas reductions has a council-approved goal. I'm wondering what was connected to those other 60 million and what the measurements are for that. And with that in mind, and all the discussion about growth that's coming, I'm wondering if there are goals in place for how clean those buildings will be. It'd be a good time to build net zeros, right? No sense in digging a deeper hole for us. So anyway, those are probably questions for another day. I just want to thank you, urge you to adopt the additional resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we think we've made any progress? We have three people in line virtually. Okay. Amir Rosenbaum, can you try one more time speaking? All right, we're going to pause on Amir, and I am going to ask for Noah Levine to try unmuting yourself.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay. No problem. Noah, would you try again and introduce yourself? You have two minutes.
Yes, hello, my name is Noah Levine. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I want to go ahead and read some scripture tonight, if that's all right. This comes from the Talmud, which is the, is in every synagogue across America. This is the Jewish holy book, so there should be no problem with reading it. And also, I just feel like it's something that should be, that people should be made aware of. Yebamoth 98A, "All non-Jew children are animals." Sanhedrin 57A, "And I will just go ahead and preface this by saying, the reason why I'm saying this is because I constantly hear about standing against hate and how, you know, you can't be hateful, you can't have, whatever, yeah, hate for people." And it mostly comes from the ADL ran by Jonathan Greenblatt, who has read the Talmud many times. And it also comes from the media, which 96% of the media is controlled by six people that are very familiar with the Talmud. So anyways, Sanhedrin 57A, "When a Jew murders a non-Jew, there will be no death penalty." This is, this next one is terrible. Kethaboth 11B, "A man who engaged in intercourse with a girl less than three years of age has done nothing."
Go ahead. All right, we are going to move on. Aaron Rest.
Okay, I wasn't done yet. Libra David 37, "To communicate anything to..."
You. I'm gonna, I need one minute of recess to talk to our attorney, just very quickly.
That's perfectly fine.
Recording stopped.
Sorry, everyone. All right.
Recording in progress.
Get your full time. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Aaron Russ. I live in Ward 2, and it is so good to see you guys again so soon. I'm here to speak once again as vice chair of the Sustainability and Resiliency Commission and as a young resident to say that we are quite excited about the recommendation that was presented by staff today later in the agenda about potentially hiring a new staff, temporary staff for the IRA employee, thus fulfilling some of the commission's goals. If our current sustainability coordinator, who is far more on her plate than just grant chasing and education, who was able to raise over $2.8 million in grants on her own in the past year, imagine the possibilities with another staff member, either freeing up the current sustainability coordinator's time or being able to fulfill those duties themselves. And of course, as well as the educational aspect that has been pushed by the city staff, I am, we are very supportive of that and believe that it is just as or even more beneficial than potential grant chasing. So we are very happy about that. And we strongly urge the council to put forward a vote and to vote for a, one of the potential recommendations as outlined by the recommendation. And we are thankful that many of you counselors helped, worked with us on putting together a sort of recommendation like this and making something like this possible for sustainability. And I believe it is another step forward for the city council and for the city as a whole to really show that sustainability is becoming and embracing that sustainability is a strategic goal and a key factor in all decisions for the city in the future. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Judy Stryer raising your hand virtually. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself using the unmute button or star six.
President Carlson.
Yeah.
Given the ongoing tech issues, we're not going to do any more calls tonight.
Okay.
Stick with in-person signups.
All right.
On open comment.
Thank you. We will proceed then. Hopefully, those who are joining online heard that, that we are not doing virtual open comment today. Moving on to Stacy Kirkpatrick.
Hello, Stacy Kirkpatrick. I am here representing the Eastside Neighborhood Association.
Just take, take a deep breath. You're doing great.
These behind me are from Eastside backing me up on this. Pertaining to the Roth, purchase of the Roth. "We are glad funding was not approved only because of the location, not because we're opposed to finding a permanent solution for housing and shelter. We feel strongly that the county and city need to collaborate with the resources that deal with the unsheltered most, the landing, RPD, and of course, the unsheltered population itself, as to location and services needed. We strongly feel a bigger space is needed. The time the unsheltered stand outside in the elements hoping to get a bed for the night could be more than two hours. The landing and the overnight shelter need to be in the same location, and it really needs to be a 24-hour facility. The ability to shower, to be fed, to be warm, to receive social services, to feel safe."
Take a breath.
Are all needs that are not currently being met for all the unsheltered friends. We think transparency, communication, and including as many people, services, and agencies is also the only way to find a workable solution versus a short-term band-aid to deal with this. Just as it takes a village to raise a child, it's going to take the whole community to help solve this. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. All right, we have a couple of minutes left. Was there anyone who wanted to speak who did not have a chance to? All right, we will close open comment and officially call the meeting to order. Clerk Geisler, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Keane.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
All right, thank you. I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zalms, to share her report.
Thank you, council president, council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public. We always start this report just by thanking our teammates for all the work they do and doing so with our customer service principles in mind. So always acting with respect, integrity, safety, and excellence in mind in the work that they're doing. So thank you to our teammates for all the service that you deliver, making the community run smoothly. Oh my. Did just want to note, probably appropriate this evening as we're moving through some of the appeals for this, just a reminder that as we get into snow season, we haven't had much so far this year. But 24 hours after the last snow has fallen is when you really need to have all your sidewalks cleared. That's the full sidewalk width, or if you happen to join a multi-use path that's wider, five feet of snow needs to be cleared. If that doesn't occur and we go and do the inspection and there's still a violation in place, there is an administrative fine that, that is in place, and then a bill for the cost of removing the snow. We do have salt and sand available. That is behind the Fiesta Cafe in the Northbrook Shopping Center. So if people need to use that, and if they just can't get through the ice, et cetera, then that is available for them to, at no charge, to come and fill and to be able to provide that opportunity on the sidewalk. Also, for those aged 60 and above or individuals with disabilities, they can contact Family Service Rochester at 507-287-2010, and they can arrange in advance to get some assistance with clearing. So just important things to know as we go through into the winter months. And it's really important particularly that that happens for our residents and visitors who aren't able to navigate the sidewalks as easily, some who may have their own mobility challenges. I just also wanted to acknowledge that it's Universal Human Rights Month. So every year on December 10th, it's the anniversary of the United Nations and their action towards the Universal Human Rights Act. And this is the 75th anniversary, this December 10th. So just wanted to note that for folks who are interested to get more information, there's information also available at the library. And then finally, as we've prepared to get deep into the winter months, this is the second year of Celebrate Rochester. So if you want to check out information, you can go to mayo civiccenter.com/events/newyearseve. There's information about the events that they have planned this year. They learned from the first year last year, and so there's some new opportunities that are going to be available, slightly different design for the event. And just like last year, it is free admission for those who are interested in attending. There are some other cost items for those who are interested, but the overall event is free to the public. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Administrator Zalms. Mayor Norton.
Terrific. Let's see if we can get going. Yes, so I'm going to just give a quick highlight about last Friday's Mayor's Medal of Honor. It's something that, this was the 40th anniversary, so it's been going on for 40 years. And you will see some names on there of some people who have just testified, as well as people from throughout our organization. And one I will just call out, not only because he was a city employee, but Dale Martinson, who is our recently retired finance director, got the Mayor's Medal of Honor for excellence in city service, keeping the city in great financial shape for a lot of years and keeping that AAA bond rating. So he was nominated and selected by the committee, as well as all these wonderful people on the screen. So it was really a nice celebration. We had a trio of folks from the Rochester Symphony come to kick us off, and I think it was just a fun event, and appreciate that some of the city council members joined us. But it just reminds me every year when I get an opportunity to do this with our community about what great people we have in this city and how hard they work to benefit the city, their friends and their neighbors. And so these are folks who were recognized by somebody in their neighborhood or their community who put in an application, and we had somewhere between 75 and 100 applications this year. And it's former winners of the, of these awards who go through and help me select winners for the year. So it's really a fun process. I did also want to mention that Dewey Day, who is one of only three, I'm one of them, Dewey Day is another, and Ardell Brady, three living mayors left that have represented the city of Rochester. And Dewey Day is in his 90s, and he came, and it was wonderful to be able to recognize him and have him there. And I was sorry, Ardell had the day wrong, and he had come the day before, so he missed it. So I was really sad that we couldn't have all three of us in one room at the same time, but that was a nice event. Also, thought I'd mention, there's a holiday train, the train that comes through town every year, and that will be here on Wednesday at 1:00 PM. And I just, it's over by this, it's along Civic Center Drive, so 1605 is the address, but there's a space there, and you can go in and bring donations for Channel 1, and the train comes and it's all lit up, and it's a fun activity. I just want to say, we do not select the time that it comes through our town. Apparently, it's gorgeous at night because it's all lit up in beautiful colors, but it's coming during the day, so while you'll get to see it, you will not see it in all its glory because the colors don't shine quite as nicely during the day. And I've gotten a number of contacts about that, but we didn't select the time. It's just making its way across the state, and it happens to come here at 1:00. So do come to that. It is a nice event and does support our Channel 1 food bank. Also, boards and commissions, the vacancies have been filled either through renewing people who have currently served, who still have some opportunity left because they can serve two terms, or new appointments are in the board packet for this evening, so really excited about that. But we do have a new opening on the charter commission. That is one that the mayor's office does not fill, but we're going to be taking as the city applications and the attorney's office and others make the decisions about the charter commission. So if you're interested in working on our charter, you can put in an application. Should do so pretty soon, I think, so they can get everybody appointed, as we're trying to do tonight, to have that all ready for January 1st, when the next year of commissions and boards meet. And I will, this is a blank screen. I didn't make a note for this, but I do want to just mention a thank you to Mayo Clinic and our community partners. As was mentioned in the public comment section, we have been working together to try to find solutions for the unhoused in our community. Mayo Clinic did step up with some funding, and we worked with our partners and Catholic charities, and the Salvation Army joined together to open an overnight, an additional overflow and overnight shelter. So our area homeless now have, those that had been waiting and couldn't get space now have a place to go. So they will take a bus and take people from one to the other every evening. It started last Friday on December 1st, and we now have an overflow center. So I feel much better about that. We've been having meetings about it, and it just literally took until the wire December 1st before that, you know, days before that, that they came to an agreement about where and got their boards to approve it. So really pleased with the work that the community is doing together to help those in need in this winter weather. So very pleased about that. So that's all I have today.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I don't believe there are any changes to the order of the agenda, so I will invite a motion to approve.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, councilmember Keane.
I'm dead.
Anything? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ace. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have one item pulled by councilmember Dennis. That's F4. This will be discussed under reports and recommendations. Is there anything else? Otherwise, I'd invite a motion to approve and block items F1 through 3 and 5 through 7.
Second.
Right, councilmember Palmer, anything?
No.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to public hearings. Okay, so I always take a couple of minutes to go through our process for public hearings. All three public hearings tonight are city-driven, so we don't have an external applicant, so they're a little bit different, but we allow, invite staff to do an introduction to the item. We open the public, and since there's no applicant, we'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and council and the mayor will have a chance to ask staff any questions before we have a motion, discussion, and vote. So we will start with item G1. I see Kelly Peterson here, and this is a continuation of the public hearing from last meeting for the certification for collection with taxes for unpaid administrative citations for weed and snow removal. So Ms. Peterson, would you just refresh our memories on where we are right now and the task at hand?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, Council President, and members of the council. I'm Kelly Peterson with Public Works. There are two hearings, the first one being for the admin citations for weed and snow removal. There's currently eight parcels that were appealed at the November 20th meeting, and those would be the ones that you'd be addressing tonight. One of the eight has already made payment, and that one would be a refund, that we would have to provide a refund. The original appeals from the property owner and the memo from the city staff was attached, along with photos for each one. Two things that were kind of brought up at the November 20th meeting for the snow removal citations. The council meeting and multiple appealers appealed stated and discussed the mail delivery for snow removal. Public Works notes that the delays in the USPS mail don't directly impact the snow removal citation since the ordinance violation has already occurred by the time we arrive on site. So just, I know that was a question that came up. The second thing was for weed removal citations. That was also brought up for the mail delivery. Similar process, Park and Rook notes that they allow three days on top of the ordinance required mitigation time to allow for the mail to process. For example, if they were cited for a tall grass and weeds violation, the ordinance requires a 48 to mitigate, they'd have up to five days before they would arrive there. And the weed removal citations are only for an excess of 12 inches or obnoxious weeds. So I am here for any questions, and tonight you'd just be deciding whether or not you'll be moving them on or waiving them.
Okay, so there, is there anyone else that would be eligible to speak tonight, or is everybody that's appealed?
Only the ones that had appealed. So the ones that had appealed could come up and speak to you again, but no one knew.
They are allowed to speak again, even though they've...
Because you continued the hearing.
Okay. All right, so I will re, or continue the public hearing, reopen it, and invite anyone who had appealed as of our last meeting to come speak.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Cutley. I do have six for G1 and two for G2 that I'm hoping to just kind of talk to together. That's okay? Okay. So I'm here on behalf, or good evening, council president, mayor, council members. As I said, my name is Stephanie Cutley, and I'm here on behalf of the property 624 Meadow Run Drive, 1717 Fourth Ave, Southwest. Those are both weed and admin fines. 4568 Buckingham Drive, 2736 Oshkosh Lane, 716 Second Street, 7077 Street Northwest. Those are all snow and admin fines. And then under G2 is 2005 18th Street and 2806 9th Ave, Northwest. Those are both for property violations, which were for tree removal. So last time we met on November 20th, I know that a few of you understood the concerns about the system I raised and were in favor of waiving the fees. But I also know that some members wanted additional time and research to consider the situation. So per your request, I'm here again. I hope that it's a productive use of our mutually valuable time. I would love to help you understand the challenges with the system and help you improve that system any way that I can. I hope you can see that we are consistently not receiving notices in an appropriate timeframe, making it difficult and sometimes in many cases impossible for us to avoid these fees. And that all property owners in Rochester can potentially be in the same situation. Per the city's request, I provided evidence, documentation, written appeals to bring this to your attention prior to the November 20th meeting. One of which was from over a year ago, that was 2005 18th Street. I provided all that I was asked. I even tried to submit additional items with photographs and dates the Friday before the 20th and was told it's too late. You'll have to come and speak in person. But I did get as much together as I could for that November 20th. On that meeting, a comment was made, you know, we shouldn't just change things when one person complains. And I do agree with that. But I'm standing here on behalf of eight properties, which have five different owners. And then the remainder of that meeting, there were several more who voiced the exact same problem. They didn't feel that they were noticed properly. One is a complaint, I agree, but when there's more than a dozen, it's probably more than that. One question I asked last meeting is if any of the notices were returned to sender and that was not addressed. So I did proactively ask the city clerk myself. And the response was none of yours were returned to sender, meaning that others have been returned to sender. And the fact that others are being returned is another data point that the process needs improvement. Since then, I did, since the November 20th, I emailed multiple council members asking for a meeting, because I wanted to understand what more I could do, what more I could advocate for. Unfortunately, I didn't receive a single reply. I know this is not an exciting topic to discuss, however, it has a significant financial impact on this community. Simple nuts and bolts things that we as a community should get right. If you leave this meeting and find my request in your spam inbox folder, trash or something, which I hope is the reason for that, please do reply to me. I will move my schedule around to meet with you. Since I wrote this, I will say after 12 o'clock today, I did get one response from someone with a timeframe which had already passed. So it left me with no movement there. I think there's extremely simple changes that can be made to save the city and residents and the community a huge amount of time and money. This includes an opt-in for email notification, sending two notices, not just one, and reminders on some such a regular cadence, such as annually sending them in conjunction with the March tax valuation permits, rental certs. In conclusion, I hope you value this feedback. In our second meeting together, you choose to follow up with me, see the opportunities for improvement in the system and pursue them. I'm happy to help with that in any way that I can. And in my opinion, at the very least, decide to do, to waive all the fees associated with the eight parcels I list. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Who is eligible?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Is there anyone else, I think there might be one other property owner that's eligible to speak?
There's a Miranda Johnson or a Melanie Lind.
Hello, baby, everybody.
And-
I have a question that why is my property taxes going up every year?
Okay, this is ma'am, it's not time to speak about property tax. The item G3 is going to speak about the budget, so we welcome you to come back up on G3.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you so much. All right, I think we're ready to- Okay, Melanie Lyden, I see you virtually. Can you try unmuting yourself? We're having some technology issues again tonight, so.
I have unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes. You have five-
Five minutes or less. Thanks for the opportunity to speak again. I just wanted to bring a couple of concerns. One was the response from the city from Tyler Spies, talking about my address 305 36th Avenue, that it had been 72 hours since the last measurable snowfall. And looking at their pictures of the pedestrian ramp, you can see that there's like at least two inches of new snow. So the 24-hour period is in question. My concerns that I have that would be generally to everybody is the ability for a neighbor to, or somebody just walking by to Target Homes to complain about them. Like perhaps my daughter's political sign in her window just satisfied someone enough to call as our house gets a citation and someone across the street doesn't with the same amount of snow. My other concern is for the city and myself being charged for work that was not done, for snow removal and mobilization that was not done. And when I had complained to the city about, you know, the work not being done and being charged for it and that the city should also be reimbursed, the answer was the city would lose money and it would look bad. I had also offered to pay the $50 for the pedestrian ramp, because I agree that could have been better. But they did not agree to doing that. But overall, I had met the criteria. There was adequate walkway. I'd removed as much as humanly was possible. And the work they did was no different than the work I did. And I think my five minutes are up. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lyden. All right, so if Miranda Johnson is not here, we will close the public hearing and invite a response. Ms. Peterson, if there's any follow-up from you, otherwise questions from my colleagues?
Every single one had the photos attached, so council, you would have been able to review them. Her most recent, there are photos attached to her request, if you'd like to review those.
Okay. Questions from my colleagues for Ms. Peterson? Otherwise, if there are no questions, a motion?
I have one quick question.
Go ahead.
Has any of the, excuse me, any of the residents who have come for appeals, have they been granted appeals in the past? Wait, their fees and citations waived in the past?
We have not.
Okay, this is the first time-
There's only a few that have ever been waived, and if they've been waived, it's because someone else has paid them. Like somebody came to the meeting and paid them for them.
Okay.
Or actually waived.
So the current residents who spoke at the last meeting and this meeting, this is, they have not had their fees waived before by the council.
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
All right, a motion?
I'll make a motion, adapting resolution levying the continued parcels from the November 20th, 2023 public hearing for proposed assessments for weed removal administrative fines, project number 70512402, and snow removal administrative fines, project number 70522402, assessed over one year with interest rate of 4.5%.
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer?
I think we've talked about this enough.
Councilmember Dennis?
Yeah, so I mentioned this at the last meeting as well. And I, I agree with both of the speakers today, as I agreed with residents who spoke the last meeting. The mail, there has been issues with the mail. As we can see tonight, we have issues with technology. I have to say, I was the council member who sent you the, wanting to meet with you, but technology had issues. And I have a borrowed laptop that didn't function well and it delayed my email from being sent. So I know technology has issues. I know the mail has issues. And, and then talking, listening to the resident who just spoke about the, the residents who are neighbors who can call in, I truly believe that, that there is truth to that. These situations-
Madam President, maybe, maybe, I'm sorry to interrupt, maybe a motion would be appropriate.
There is a motion. We have a motion in a second. You mean as an amendment?
Yes, if that is the intent.
I'm, I'm just, I would, I don't have the emotion, I mean, amendment right now. I, I-
The question is, are you speaking to, towards making-
Against, against the, the motion. That's why I'm speaking to share my opinion on why I am not going to be voting for this motion.
Thank you. I misunderstood.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I thought you were looking for an amendment to exclude the properties.
Well, after hearing my colleagues' vote, I don't think amendment would, would pass. So I, I'm not going to make an amendment. But I do feel that some of these claims are subjective. And I, I did a brief, I don't know, illustration that myself, I had someone who did not like my political, I don't know, my votes, I believe is the reason, and called my backyard in for too many children's toys. And when I walked around with city inspectors, they saw other backyards that had violations. They saw the violations, but because the other backyards were not called in, they could not do anything. So I had people say, the city inspector who walked around with me said, is that your toy over there? And I'm like, no, that's my neighbor's toy. Okay, well, can't do anything about that, but that's a violation, you know. So you have to call in to have a violation. And I do feel that that is very subjective in some circumstances. Although I do, on all, all of that accessibility is incredibly important. We need to have our sidewalks cleared. So I do not feel that we should be making, like, you know, having people just come and have their fees and citations waived. However, with these situations, I do believe we should show some grace as a city council. And since they have not had fees or citations waived in the past, have this as a time to say, we will waive these fees. And in the future, we will take note and not have future fees and citations waived. So I would be in favor of the people who have come at the last meeting and this meeting to have their fees and citations waived due to the circumstances of not having mail issues and, and doing the best they can to clear their sidewalks. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Dennis. I, I hear you and I appreciate your thoughtful perspective. And I guess what I'm sitting with is that accessibility is important, safety is important. And ultimately, this is a responsibility of being a resident. We have these ordinances in place for reasons. And if we aren't requiring people to pay for these services, that shifts the burden to the rest of our community. And, and that is what I'm struggling with. It is our responsibility to take care of our properties. And, you know, I'm absolutely supportive of having a further conversation about process improvement and how we can improve down the road and address some of these challenges. But I do think that we need to be thoughtful about the rest of our community as well. What's going on over here with staff? Go ahead, Ms. Steinhauser.
Thank you, Council President Carlson. I did just want to clarify that when we go on site to do inspections, if we see violations in other yards, we do enforce. We don't just go to, if we see them at the time where we're inspecting another property and we know that, we do send a letter and send an inspector out. So there were not other violations noted. I just want to make clear that we, when we see others, we also note them.
Thanks for that clarification. Other comments? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, a part of, when I was looking into some of these things, and I did see the different staff response on the mail was sent and things like that. But also, I did talk through with the training for these people to go out and do this, to watch for adjoining properties, to watch for if it looks like it's something. I mean, I think we, we have to end up making rules like saying, do we want to have it be self-reported? Do we want to send out our own staff doing these sort of checks? These are difficult things to set up, but this is the best system we have in place. We can do reviews of it. But again, based on what I've seen this year as far as the complaints, I'm looking, going, this, this is working as well as we can have it working. So I'm going to support the motion tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. I, I like the discussion that I'm hearing. I also appreciate Ms. Steinhauser's response in that if an inspector sees another violation, they will go ahead and send out a letter. I've also heard revision mentioned a couple of times. And I'm wondering if we could actually have a study session on this to, to review, to review this, to make sure that our ordinance is clear, so that we have an accurate policy and then an accurate enforcement that should go along with the policy. Because when, when I hear perhaps managers who manage numerous properties in a management position that should be aware, I would assume because of their position, they should be well aware of what our ordinances are. I know we educate pretty successfully about snow removal. Maybe perhaps not as much as the weed enforcement. I know Nomo May can be very confusing. And we also took an extensive amount of time to work through the alternate side parking between what was March 1st and December 1st, and then we lowered it to May to November. So I'd like to have a little bit of review on this, please.
Yeah, I think we asked for that last time. And Ms. Alms, I don't know if you have a follow-up, but-
Oh, Council President, Councilmember, we're working on scheduling that for your 2024 study session calendar.
Thank you for that. Any final comments before I hand it back to Councilmember Dennis? All right, go ahead.
I just, I also want to chime in. I think a review of ordinance and policy would be very needed. And just for clarification, even in the most perfect world, not everything's 100%. And I want to just speak, the neighbors who had issues in their yard, they did not receive citations. So I know from my experience, that wasn't the case. And I videoed it if anyone needs. But I, I believe that it's important that we acknowledge that there's human error, that there is subjective worlds. There's some perhaps not good intentions out there who might, who might like cite a neighbor out of reasons other than the best interest of the community. And I would really like to make sure that, that if something like that happens, that there is a grace period or some kind of situation where residents don't get punished for doing the best they can and, and just being in the bad, you know, situation.
Thank you. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Dennis voting nay. We'll move on to item G2, which is a similar continuation of the certification for collection with taxes of unpaid special charges related to snow, rubbish and tree removal and property violations. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Peterson before I reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President and members of the council. This one is related to the direct contractor fees related to snow removal, rubbish removal, tree removal and property violations. There are currently 12 that are repealed at the November 20th meeting, two being of property violations, one being for a tree removal, one being for rubbish and the remainder being for snow removal. Six of them were for Black Swan again, which she had already spoke. And the rest of them are for individual property owners. Public Works is recommending waiving one of the snow removals, which was at the address of 4739 Liverpool Lane Northwest. This one was never brought to our attention. The person had never called prior. After further review, we're recommending waiving it.
Just give me one second to pull up that. All right, thank you for that. So we will reopen the public hearing. And I do have the list of potential speakers in front of me. No one signed up. But would anyone who had appealed as of our last meeting, November 20th, like to speak? Anyone joining virtually, use the raise hand function and press star nine. Hearing, no one. We will close the public hearing. Is there any question for staff from my colleagues? Or a motion?
As far as the motion, I wanted to understand, is the motion, does that include the Liverpool Lane address? Or how is that addressed? How will that be addressed?
I think that you'd have to change the motion to exclude.
Okay.
Councilmember Wall?
I will move to approve that resolution exempting Salvatore Storino at 4739 Liverpool Lane Northwest.
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Wall, you have the floor.
Mr. Storino came and was so humbled to speak before this group last, a couple of weeks ago, and had actually hired a service to address the sidewalks while he was gone. And it just didn't get done. I don't think it was his fault that it was not done. And I, I am really grateful that the city recommends waiving his fee.
Thank you for that. Other discussion? Hearing, none. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Dennis voting nay. All right, we are moving on to G3, which is also a public hearing. It's the adoption of the 2024 Property Tax Levy, 2024-25 Operating Budget and 24 through 29 Capital Improvement Plan Budget. And I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zalms.
Thank you, Council President, Councilmembers, Mayor Norton, members of the public. As we get the presentation loaded, I do just have a brief presentation. Obviously, you've discussed this a numerous number of times over the last year. So just a brief presentation to ground us in what is before you this evening. Um, so just a brief presentation to ground us in, um, what is before you this evening. Um, and, uh, for the benefit of those here that may have public comment. Uh, so as I mentioned, um, we have had this in front of the city council since April of twenty twenty three. Um, we started with the strategic priorities and, and reaffirming those and centering on your top three items. Came back with those factors influencing the budget, um, discussed the baseline budget and the capital improvement program, um, in June, as well as had your audit update for the act- activity that actually occurred in, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty two. Um, then moved forward with the full, um, recommended, uh, budget in study sessions in August and September with the preliminary levy approved on September eighteenth. And that brings us here today for final, final levy approval and adoption of the budget and capital improvement program. Um, so again, that is why we're here this evening is to, um, hold the required public hearing. I do think it's important to note for folks, um, if there's concerns about your property valuation, which is one of the significant things that can change, um, what comes to you in the mail for your property tax levy, um, that those, uh, questions really need to go to Olmsted County, to the assessor's office. Um, they can be reached at five oh seven three two eight seventy six thirty five or propertyweb@co.olmsted.mn.us. Um, they are the authority that would be able to, um, look at that. However, when your act- your suggested valuation comes out in spring each year, that starts a time for you to be looking at your about valuation, um, process. And so at this point in time, typically, um, the only avenue still available to people is tax court. Um, so, um, we did, uh, last year start bringing forward some information about other programs that can reduce individual property taxes. Most of these are, um, within state law. And so, um, just reminding people that it's always really important if you live and in your owned property, um, that you make sure that you're signed up for the Homestead Exclusion Program. So, um, for certain bodies of property, um, that reduces the amount of, um, taxable value of your property and the amount of taxes that you pay. Um, for year twenty twenty two, um, there were changes in tax law about the amount of refund that would be available, um, on your income tax returns, as well as the renters' property tax refund. So those are important things for people to be aware of. Um, and then, um, making sure, um, that you're just aware of where to go for this information in case it's something that might be valuable. Um, there are also, uh, a special homestead classification for blind or permanently disabled individuals, uh, market value exclusions on homestead property for disabled veterans, senior citizen property tax liberal options. And then, um, there have been some direct payments being made, um, by the state. Again, relative to that twenty twenty two change, um, for the direct rebate based on income. So all of these have a lot of different rules related to them. You can find them at, um, the Minnesota Department of Revenue. Um, and, um, also listed here is the legislative actions that have much more deeper dive in for people if they're interested in that, or if you have a neighbor or loved one that you wanted to look into this for. Um, in general, if you Google Minnesota Department of Revenue Property Tax, um, Programs, you're gonna find that as the second thing that comes up to be able to take you, um, to, to find out what kind of, um, options might be available to you. You can also call the Minnesota Department of Revenue, six five one two nine six three seven eight one to get information or, um, it correspond with them by mail if that's something that is, um, your, your choice of communication. So, um, getting into the budget, um, what we have before you is a five hundred and seventy nine point one million dollar budget. That's all inclusive of Rochester Public Utilities, um, our capital improvement program for twenty twenty four, as well as the associated debt service. Um, that is a nine point four four percent increase year over year, which has virtually nothing to do with your tax rate, um, that you see in the mail. But, um, we'll have a little bit more information about that. It's the dollar amount necessary in order to fund, um, tax levy funded operations in twenty twenty four based on the budget. Um, some increases in the general rate for electric and for water, as well as some costs related to advanced metering infrastructure, um, which is part of the efforts that Rochester Public Utilities are taking, which will help, um, consumers be much more informed about, um, how they're utilizing water and electricity. Just noting here, um, a lot of what we base this on is the available revenue. Some good news, obviously, that, um, increases, um, in a number of different revenue sources. We're starting to see return of that hotel motel tax, which rely on, um, both, uh, to fund the civic center, but also, um, for capital improvements in that space. Uh, seeing some return in inspection permits in lieu of tax. That's, um, actually, uh, payments made, um, by our public utilities that if they were a private utility, would be paying, um, tax levy. Um, some increase there as well as in, um, this, the sewer utility charge and the collections on stormwater utility fees. So those are based on actuals. Um, and you can see the parking fund is starting to return, um, quite significantly, which is a, is positive for, um, the city of Rochester and our ability to provide those, um, um, funds that are, are not supported by the tax levy. We talk about the tax levy a lot, uh, but you can see in this pie chart, it's about seventeen point five percent of all of the revenue that the city relies on in order to fund services. And the primary services that that fund are, are services that we don't charge, um, individuals for. It comes through that, that general property tax levy. Um, the vast majority of our revenue is coming from charges for service. So that is things like the rates that you pay for water, electric, um, wastewater treatment, um, the cost of rentals at, uh, recreation facilities, et cetera. Uh, we also have intergovernmental revenue, and that is primarily a revenue that comes in to help support the airports, um, the, the transit system, et cetera. Um, so, but for those revenues, we might be looking at general, uh, property tax to support those types of activities. And then the miscellaneous revenue, which is private funds, fines and forfeitures, um, some of what you, um, did here this evening, and then, um, the capital improvement program. So, um, there's different interfund, um, activity that occurs in order to fund those projects. Um, but again, we do talk about the tax levy and the tax capacity mostly when, um, talking about the budget. Um, the preliminary levy is, um, a little over a hundred and one million dollars. Uh, the preliminary total budget, as I mentioned, is five hundred and seventy nine, um, point one million. And that's with the changes made by, um, Rochester Public Utilities. They, um, are always a little bit later because they're trying to get that lowest rate possible by seeing what kind of consumption has occurred in the summer for water and electric utility. The vast majority of this budget is really supporting existing operations. Um, I would note the second stack, um, on that left chart, we have been using holistic budget stability funds, one-time funds to buy down the cost of the levy. And so th- those are decreasing over the next three years. And so that i- is the equivalent of one percent of that increase in the general property tax levy. So we need to reabsorb. We had a zero levy year and we, we need to, we still have the same number of services. And those services, um, actually are costing more. As you can see, um, employee services are increasing. We have costs in our capital improvement plan, as well as the equipment revolving, um, stabilization, um, for that fund where we're seeing significant increases in cost. Um, and then a very small amount relative to the rest in decision packages to continue to invest in, um, programming and, um, make sure that we don't get behind. Here's where this equates to your tax levy. Um, you can see the twenty twenty three, um, tax rate of forty six point three four percent. So that's the current year. That's the lowest it's been in twelve years. Probably could show this and see that it's the lowest it's been in about twenty years. So that's the actual tax rate that's, uh, being applied across all of the property tax classes. And you can see that with that, um, change to the tax levy in twenty twenty four, it's still the second lowest in all of those years, a small increase, um, from twenty twenty three. So that's really the, the number that's spreading across, um, different properties. But of course, the assessed valuation makes a difference. So if you look at a median value home, um, that median value home, if they were valued at two hundred and seventy three thousand in twenty twenty three and they, they didn't see an increase in value, um, there would be a small increase in city, um, tax collected based on how the residential distribution has happened. Um, there's a little more residential, um, value, uh, than some of the other classes. But overall, if you look at all of the proposed tax rates for the different entities, they would see a small decrease in the amount of tax paid. That's how the proportionality of, um, the tax levy works. That same home, if they saw the average six point one percent value increase, um, they would be absorbing more of the tax value. So they would see an increase in their tax bill, um, for the city of Rochester of about a hundred and twenty dollars. And the vast majority of that, again, is related to their assessed value and, um, how, how much they absorb based on the increased in their assess, the increase or not of their assessed value. And you can see the different classes. It's fairly small up here. You can try to see the different classes, but I will explain it a little bit. So residential saw, uh, a small increase, about a little less than a one percent increase, um, in, in the twenty twenty four distribution, um, of market value. So this is the market value of property, not the taxable value. Um, you can see apartment was almost like basically flat, went down point one percent. Um, and commercial, you can see it went down point six percent. But it's, we're, we're, we're starting to see a return in the commercial values because it went down half again as much as it did in twenty twenty three. Um, so the spread of those, um, taxes and the increase in market value, which is, um, about one billion dollars, um, for the increased market value for properties of all classes in the city of Rochester, um, is part of how, um, all of the pie chart shifts. Um, on the next slide here, you can see, uh, the change, well, maybe in the tax capacity. So the share of the tax levy and how the different pieces of the pie are absorbing the share of the tax levy. So residential, again, is absorbing about a one percent increase in that tax levy. So there's more that's getting spread to residential in part because of value. Um, could be new value and, and, um, and the value on existing properties. Um, you're seeing, uh, again, a slowing of the decrease that's happening in commercial. So as we had mentioned before, we're hoping to see that come back and we'll have more of the spread of the tax levy to commercial, and then we'll have commercial people here. Um, and then, um, just pretty steady, um, in the apartment category of how the tax capacity is spreading there. And the tax capacity increased by thirteen million dollars, um, over pay twenty twenty three. So, um, that's really how that's spreading. It just means that residential, based on all of the value, is absorbing slightly more of the tax levy. Another way to look at this is the tax allocation. So if you look at, um, where the dollars are going in our budget, um, the vast majority of, um, any individual median, um, value homes tax levy is going to pay for public safety. We use property tax for that. We don't charge when people call nine one one. Um, then general government, which has quite a lot of different activities in it, Public Works, municipal recreation, the library, capital improvement projects, and so on. So you can see per tax bill how that really breaks out per year, um, for an individual. And then the property tax distribution. The general fund is receiving the majority of the property tax and the services that are in the general fund, again, um, rely more heavily on tax levy and less on direct fee for service. Another way of looking at this is really to talk about the dependency of each fund on, um, the tax levy. And you can see the library is very dependent on the tax levy. It's a pre-service, uh, open to the public. Uh, Parks and Recreation does charge for some things, and so they have some opportunities for revenue collection. Um, the general fund, again, where police, fire, public safety, um, and Public Works are located, um, really is, is reliant on the property tax, but not quite as much. We have other revenues there. Um, some of the debt service, um, relies on, um, property tax, but some of that is in other enterprise funds. And again, we do not utilize tax levy for DMC, um, capital projects. And you can just see again, the cost of service, the cost of employee services is a significant driver. We're, um, a labor state, and so we are subject to the Minnesota, um, pearl out laws for, um, for, for negotiating with employees. And there are some significant costs here. We saw some changes to our next round of three-year contracts, and we are absorbing the adjustments necessary in this budget in order to maintain, um, personnel. We talk about LGA, local government aid occasionally. Um, city of Rochester at the top of this chart, a hundred and twenty five thousand population. Our twenty twenty three LGA was constrained at just below four million dollars. There were some adjustments in state, state legislation, um, so we saw an increase. But again, the formula does not really work in our favor. We will continue to see decreases in local government aid based on how it's distributed and the formula that's used. Um, yeah, and, and so we had dedicated that to more one-time funding so that you don't, um, continue to have to address this, um, in your ongoing operating budget. Again, the general fund expenses I mentioned that are the majority of the property tax levy, public safety, public works, general government, and other is things like civic music and some of your other, um, smaller departments. And I think it's always important to remind folks that we are growing communities. So if you look at the last forty years, we've seen significant amount of growth in our infrastructure, um, the square miles of streets and parks, et cetera. Very small increase in the number of full-time equivalents. Some of that's because we work through with contracts or, um, work with others in order to be able to deliver those services. But a fairly, fairly significant discrepancy, um, between growth in size and scope of the operation and the number of employees there are to support it. You do have a future item on H one, um, talking about sustainability initiatives. Did just want to point out that this budget does, um, support some significant initiatives across the three-legged stool of sustainability, um, with environment, economic and equity. Um, and then, um, some additional funding and pending opportunities as we wait final award of, um, things that we're know that were awarded, but we can't really announce them until we enter the final grant agreements, um, for Sixth Street, uh, and neighborhood safety and the riverfront improvements, North Broadway, Park and Ride, urban fee, pre, urban tree funding for planting and maintenance, the park maintenance facility, um, the benchmarking funding that's pending for RPU, um, and, um, electric vehicle funding. So, um, just wanted to point that out. Obviously, we have significant capital improvement projects, um, that are here. These have been revised slightly, um, primarily based on changing, um, the total project cost for Rochester Public Utilities and the way that that investment is shown here in order to properly account for it. And then, um, just over the course of the next six years, about a one point one billion dollars of investment in, um, capital improvement projects in order to, um, continue to meet the needs of a fifty five square mile city.
Ms. Elms, are you? Oh, you're ready for the public hearing right on time?
I was following.
That is excellent. Good work. I was gonna say, you need more time. I'm sure we're amenable to it, but you're good?
Yep.
All right, so we will open the public hearing for the budget item, G three. And I have one, Augustina Miller, signed up. I don't know if the, that was the person who came up earlier. Is there an Augustina Miller? Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this item? Is there anyone joining remotely? Uh, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Final call? All right, we will close the public hearing and, uh, ask if there are questions for Administrator Zolms or staff. Uh, Ms. Dennis, Councilmember Dennis?
All right, so I know this question has been, um, brought up before, but I, I can't quite remember the answer. So I just want to ask it again. How many cities of our size fund for, from city taxpayer, city government fund an airport?
Um, Councilmember, that's a great question. I don't have a perfect answer for you. Um, there are significant, there's a number of airports across Minnesota, for example. So Duluth has an airport, it's not an international airport. Minneapolis has an airport.
Are they city-funded?
Um, well, there's, we have a small amount of city funds that go to the airport. The way that the airport fund works and the way that the contract works, the city provides about five hundred thousand dollars. We fund the utilities, um, but each year, um, based on their revenues over expenses, the airport returns about a million dollars, sometimes more, um, to the airport fund. So, so we, we upfront the operating costs and then they return, um, whatever the differences in their revenue, um, to the airport fund, and we use that to invest in the capital, uh, costs are, are match for the state and federal funds. So actually, we get about five hundred thousand dollars a year back from the airport to reinvest in the capital. Um, it's just a function of how the contract works in order to be able to, um, fund the operation and then for the operation to work well, and then return the capital funds to be able to continue to reinvest with our match in the airport. So it's funded in a very similar fashion to other airports. I would suggest that based on the size and scope of the airport, we probably put significantly less direct city funds into the airport than most because they're actually returning the funds that we reinvest for capital.
Okay, so, so I guess, um, what I'm saying is, uh, to my knowledge, there's not a lot of, uh, cities our size who fund, who have city-funded airports. And I, I haven't looked across the nation, but I know there's dynamics in our city. I know Mayo Clinic puts a lot of money in. Um, but we do spend, uh, five hundred thousand, you say, how, how much exact of the tax levy is spent from property?
There's about five hundred thousand dollars that goes to the, so let me explain this again. There's about five hundred thousand dollars that goes to the airport fund to fund operations. Each year, they return per the contract about a million dollars, so five hundred thousand dollars more than we spend.
But, but there's, there's additional things that come up that need.
No, no, no.
I, I just.
That's all funded by the airport fund. So it's not funded by the general fund that has property tax levy. We make a transfer to the airport fund. They return at the end of the year after their audit, the additional revenue that is over and above.
So last year, we got, they literally hand you check, symbolic check of over a million dollars or whatever the amount is that goes back into that fund that then is used to match state and federal funding that goes to the airport.
It's an enterprise fund. It operates like an enterprise. But the way that the contract works for operation of the airport, there's some upfront dollars, and then it's returned to go to capital reinvestment at the airport, which is primarily state and federal funding. Um, and sometimes we have a five or ten percent match that comes from the airport fund with funds that were built from that returned capital investment that the airport provides. When I, there's about a nine million dollar reserve in the airport fund that we use.
But all that money goes back into the airport. So if we did not have an airport as a city, if a private company.
You can't not have an airport. All of that federal investment requires each time you take a federal investment to continue to operate the airport for another twenty years, like every other city that has an airport. There are smaller cities than ours that have an airport. For example, Mankato is a city of about forty five thousand people. They operate an airport.
But if we did not have the airport, it would save taxpayers. But if we did not have the airport, it would save taxpayers five hundred thousand.
You would receive five hundred thousand dollars less, and you would not have the economic impact of the airport, of which the greatest activity that occurs at the airport is actually cargo. Over a hundred million pounds of cargo a year go in and out, a portion of which does support Mayo Clinic. But our largest industries, not just in Rochester, but in the surrounding area, are manufacturing, and they rely heavily on the cargo aspect of the airport.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, just for the record, I'm not saying we shouldn't have an airport. We definitely should have an airport.
It would not change your budget significantly.
I don't believe the city necessarily should be funding the airport because there's a lot of other options. Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? Member Keen?
There, I was gonna make a motion.
For Wong? No, if he, I'd like questions though before we have a motion.
Question.
Let's do a motion.
Okay. I was gonna make a motion adopting the resolution providing the following. There's six parts here. Number one is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five operating budget. Then the capital improvement budget, the general levy at one hundred and one million, five hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. The other parts are the electric water utility budgets, electric and water utility rates, and then payments in lieu of taxes.
Second.
Member Keen?
And we've spent a lot of time on this budget this year. I think there's a lot of learning we can do about. The way I look at budgets is always the sources and uses of money. And I think this group correctly focuses mostly on levy and what the property tax money is collected for and what it's used for. And I think those of you who are following closely here knows that the majority of that is public safety, general general government, but then also the amenities we have, which are parks and libraries. Those are the places that are levy, and I think this group does a good job of trying to focus on that. As far as the twenty twenty-four raise, I I do get concerned with numbers that is high as nine percent year over year. But I, again, going through this, and if you look at page three sixty-three, the in the packet, there there's a good explanation just showing that the majority, the almost six percent of that is based on just year-over-year increases in the people that do the work, that are the city services that are funded through the budget. That's the main thing. But I think we also have to look across this group here or two and say, we also have decision packets we've done and these decisions we've made through the year to fund things like new software for the police department that ends up coming in and hitting our budget. Or we're gonna fund a new position with traffic because of all the problems we've been having with road, things like that. Those decisions drive these things and get us to this nine point four. I don't, I I appreciate the staff and the finance group trying to bring this, but I always like to consider this and I I hope we all do consider this our budget, and we have to stand up to it, and I'm gonna support it that way tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. Ms. Elms, did you want to weigh in?
It could be at the end. I just want to thank staff. I didn't have the time to do that. It takes a lot of time and effort for staff to bring this forward and to be thoughtful and put this out there, not just the staff that does their individual department budget, but definitely the team in finance. So thanking Jean, Erin, Rachel and Josh for all their hard work to get it from. You would be amazed at the number of touchpoints that occur in order to make a five hundred and sixty-seven million dollar budget work within our financial software. So just great work from the team and also coming up with the information for this evening.
Absolutely. I second that. Councilmember Palmer?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for the budget that we started in April, and we had a lot of questions and answers and kicked a lot of things around. But I'm hap, I'm happy with the way the budget turned out. It's an investment for our community. The the one thing I would, you know, remiss of not saying is our LGA is horribly underfunded and the state needs to help us out with that. I think it's, Duluth is getting more of an increase than we get total, and I don't see the fairness of that for our citizens in Rochester.
Port that continuing to be a legislative priority and appreciate that you mentioned that really important factor that we're considering and contending with that many other cities across the state are not. So Councilmember Wong, go ahead.
I too am supportive of the budget, largely because of the median value home. The increase in taxes for this coming year would be three point two percent, which is well within inflation. It's not the nine point four four that some people would like to bandy about in terms of property taxes. At the same time, I know that that's not true of everybody. Some of us were more, much more, some of us were less. I just bring up one member of the community who sent me a photo of his property tax, and it went up thirty-eight percent. Now, that's largely because there was a thirty-four percent increase in the reassessment of his home that we don't have any control over. We worked together with the county and found that the state used to have a cap on how much it could go up every year, I think twelve percent. But the state has done away with that, and so we can raise somebody's home value. And I think it's a fair home value for his home, but it went up thirty-four percent, and he's a retired person. That's really a tough thing to take. So as we make hard decisions tonight and into the future, there there are some people for whom this is really hard. Thank you.
And just on that note, so if if somebody has experienced a significant increase, you went through all of the options. If somebody were to just call the city, what would would somebody be available to then help navigate through what the options are?
Council President, they would be available, and what we would be doing is putting them in touch with those tax rebate programs because when there is that much of an increase year over year, there is a program through the state where they can absorb. It it's sort of like eases the burden as it rolls in. And depending on the individual, they might be eligible for some other, either deferral or other options, depending on what works best for them. That doesn't work for everyone, and not everyone qualifies. But the the significant increase year over year does, I believe, qualify for a state assistance.
But just one more time, if somebody reaches out to general city information, we can get them to a person that can help navigate what resources.
Yes, we would send them resources and let them navigate that. Typically, we don't help them through the process specifically, but we do make sure that they're aware of the resources and send them direct information. We've printed things out for people in the past as well.
Councilmember Palmer, did you have a follow-up?
Just quick, it's on our website also, right?
Yeah, correct. It is on our, there's a link. But also, if people were looking at this, all of the links are clickable within the PowerPoint presentation.
All right, Mayor Norton?
Thank you. I just want to compliment my colleagues on their comments. A lot of it's been covered. I appreciate Councilmember Wong's comments as well, because we do need to remember that some of these impacts, particularly in people with fixed income, is significant, even if we don't have control over it and it's not even our doing. I think all of us feel the impact of that impact on our our individual constituents. We all feel that. I think this is a reasonable budget this year, and I, it was hard, hard, hard to get here from the beginning. A lot of requests were not met, and I think we haven't talked so much about that now as we did early on in the process. But just a tiny sliver of the requests that came from staff and the community have been able to be met with that nine point, whatever percent, nine point four percent levy increase. So we were very careful about what was forwarded. Administration was careful about what was forwarded, and we did discuss that before that particular amount was even brought forward. And I I do want to say, it has been hard to explain the difference between levy, what that levy impact was. Nine point four percent was really frightening to people, and they just simply did not understand that it was going to look different on their individual property tax. The impacts are different on every home. It's, it was not nine point four percent. So I feel like for the last several months, a lot of people have gone through angst thinking that that we had increased their taxes nine percent, and and in fact, we did not. And, you know, I think the average of three percent has been bandied about, and I think, you know, that's probably closer to to what people influenced on it or experienced on an average, knowing that home of home valuations are the biggest impact on people's taxes every single year. And I really appreciate those pointed out. The only other thing I'm gonna add is, you know, something that was just glanced over was the, we have a goofy name for it, but the Budget Stability Fund, which was a decision that the council made years ago. When we got the, two years ago now, three years ago now, it seems like a long time ago. When we got some ARPA funds during the pandemic, we did not lay employees off. We kept our employees, and we chose to use some of the funds to stabilize our budget so that we had less of an impact on taxpayers. We could have spent it, as many cities did, on any myriad of of items. And we did spend some on things that rose to the top of being, you know, crisis or important, but the rest of it was really used to make sure that we didn't have a huge increase in property taxes. And so while that decision was three years ago, we're still getting, even though it's a small amount, we're still getting some impact on that and benefit to our taxpayers. So I thought it was worth mentioning that as well. So we've had a lot of good discussions over the last many months, and here we are today. So look forward to the passage.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Dennis.
All right, if you, anyone's been following this, they will know that I wasn't, I haven't been supporting this from the beginning because of issues such as transparency, asking for information that hasn't been given, believing that taxpayer dollars could be spent more wisely. I I know the staff has done a wonderfully hard, you know, job that they have and and have crafted this budget many hours. However, I I do think the city administration could have done better and been more wise with finding ways to save money. And I'm not talking about cutting parks, library, public safety. I'm talking about more competitive bidding with contractors. I'm talking about making sure that that we we can look at the needs of of people who are struggling incredibly. Some states and cities have caps on their levy, but the the our taxes are going higher and higher. People in Ward Six and across Rochester are struggling. They, you know, the these taxes are eating them up. They they can't make ends meet paycheck to paycheck. And I I cannot keep, you know, vote for a taxes increase that I truly believe could have been reduced if if funds were spent more wisely. I've given examples. You can look at the tens of thousands spent on illegal censures. You can look at ways transparency is, things are being done behind closed doors. You can look at a lot of different ways that we could be more accountable to residents for their tax dollars. We are on this council to be good stewards, to treat every dollar as if they were our own, and I don't think that has been done. So I am not against taxes. I voted for the school referendum. I voted for the sales tax because I believe taxes are needed in our society. I believe we could have done things better on the council to lobby for more LGA funds. So for instance, maybe let council members go to National League of City conferences. That was right there is an example of wasteful tax dollars, if you follow that that issue. I feel that there is so much more that could be done to save money and help residents with this very regressive form of taxation. So I am not going to be able to support a tax that I believe is not needed at the level it is. Thank you.
I will say that Councilmember Dennis, I hear your concerns. I also think that some of those are your perspective and not shared by the rest of us on council. We've maintained a triple-A bond rating for what?
I believe forty.
It's the longest-running city, one of the longest-running cities in the state of Minnesota to have.
Running city in the state of Minnesota.
Have the best financial rating possible. So we are using our resources well. We are very transparent in our budget process. We have an incredibly detailed budget document available for anyone and everyone who would like to peruse the details of how we're spending. And I think that there's this challenge with, none of us want to sit here and raise taxes. We absolutely appreciate that it is challenging for many people in our our community who are living on fixed incomes and in difficult situations to look at yet another increase. And at the same time, we as a council are responsible for making this the best city possible, making sure it's an opportunity, people have opportunities to thrive. We have high expectations for our services, high expectations for our amenities. We have a really high expectation for the caliber of our staff and thinking about, I know our police chief is here, just our our police. We want the best police force possible to keep our community safe and make sure that we have a chance to continue developing in the face of significant change that's coming for our community. So it doesn't feel good to vote for this, but I absolutely support it. And and Allison or Ms. Elms from day one has stated that her goal is to increase efficiency in the organization, and I see her doing that every day and being really thoughtful about long-term planning and using our resources really smartly. And she has a leadership team that backs her up on that, and they're making decisions all the time because we can't just, we don't have endless access to resources. So appreciate staff. It's a hard decision, but it's also done with a belief that this community can be exceptional. And I'm grateful for all of you who are taxpayers and contribute to making that happen. Any other comments? All right, let's go ahead, and you're okay, Councilmember Kirkpatrick? Vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Action carries with Councilmember Dennis voting nay. Let's take a, just a quick five-minute break, and then we'll get, come back for our topic on environmental resources.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Yeah, welcome back, everyone. We are moving on to item H1, which is the, many people spoke about during open comment, the update. Update on options to support access for the IRA, which is the Inflation Reduction Act programs being finalized for individual consumers. And I will turn it over to Deputy Administrator Steinhauser. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, President Carlson, Mayor Norton, members of the city council. So I don't have a formal presentation today, just really wanted to provide you some opening comments for the discussion. We provided a rather detailed memo that I hope provides some context for the work that we've done since late October, when you asked us to take a look at what options we could suggest to help support Inflation Reduction Act dollars and specifically towards residential. But we looked at it through the lens of not only residential, but commercial and nonprofit and business sector. So how we approached this, it was not only myself and Lauren Johnson, but teammates from Community Development, teammates from RPU came together to look and assess what do we currently offer? What's already underway or, or in the hopper? And that any work that we do could align and build off of that existing work. And as we inventoried those efforts, we also had a lot of discussion. And so there's really two main things that influenced where we landed with a recommendation for you, before you this evening. One was where the state is at. Currently IRA dollars are available, anybody can access them. We're not waiting for that program to roll out. What we are waiting for is to understand what the state's strategy is going to be in rolling out IRA dollars for low-income residents. And so really, as a team, we felt that until we understood what the state was going to do. For example, are they going to handle it completely in-house? Are they going to look for cities to help support that? Until we get direction and understand what the state is going to be doing, it would be a bit premature for us to try and design something that we may have to modify depending on what the state ultimately hopes to do. The other big thing, and we spent a lot of time giving that context in the memo, is to really understand what we have on the horizon as a city, to understand the work related to the two new initiatives, specifically from local option sales tax, the many dollars, over thirty-four million dollars that we've received just in 2023 alone for new initiatives that align and advance the council's strategic priorities. And then, of course, the announcement of Mayo to invest five billion dollars in Rochester over the next seven years, really trying to catalog and understand the significance of all of those together and the work that's, and resources that are going to be needed by the city team to support successful rollout of initiatives that support all of that work. And we have no doubt that sustainability is an element and a component of all of that. So those were the two major issues that we said, until we start to get a little bit more clarity on what the state program's doing and we really understand how we resource for all of that other work, would put us in a better place to understand than what we might be able to do to expand other sustainability efforts here in this city organization. Having said that, we felt fairly comfortable that, that we could pursue the Department of Energy internship program. We already are in, have, do an annual intern with partnering with DMC. We're expanding that to do two interns. And so bringing on hopefully the DOE intern and the two new interns could help us start to get a little bit more out there in terms of education. There is already significant work underway. We're already doing contractor and developer training. We have current training planned in the spring. We have contract underway with CEE, which is a sustainability and company that provides education materials. And they'll be providing us a hotline for people to call and get questions answered. That is not exclusive to residential properties. That is available for anybody who calls, whether you're commercial, nonprofit, residential. We have, I could go on. We have a lot of work already being done in, in many different buckets that align with the sustainability plan. But for the purposes of the ask that you gave us in October, we feel like we've come with what we think is a good starting point. And then we can evaluate in 24 the success of the work that we're doing and make any adjustments based on, again, what the state winds up doing, what we think we need for resources for all the other work that has to happen to continue to advance Rochester and, and advance your strategic priorities.
Thank you, Ms. Steinhauser. So let's take a few minutes to ask questions before a motion. So everyone does have a chance to ask questions before we've entered into a motion. I know we, we had a little challenge with that last meeting. So are there questions of staff to start? Go ahead.
Yes, thanks for the, again, the high-level understanding. I went through some of the things, including the sustainability plan. I just want to understand your comments there because I think there's two different things in my mind. There's, you wanted to understand like all of the other demands when you talk about the major projects, the idea that we passed the sales tax and now we have to figure, we've got a lot of major things. Those are a lot of projects going on. But I, I think there was also in your, in the, on the packet or in the council, or the request for council action that I read, I was also looking at, and there's all these other sustainability things we have going on that are beyond what, you know, if you, the simple definition of what we have going on as a one-person department and some trying to get grants. I think we were, I, I got the impression we're also trying to explain that, hey, there's major initiatives with district energy. There's major initiatives. So did I hear that wrong or is that part of what you were trying to say? We got to sort of get our arms around, understand the big projects to come, but then also what we're already doing and to make sure we're successful in those.
Yeah, that's a great question and thank you because I did want to clarify. Yeah, we, what was provided in the materials is our first attempt to really understand how far sustainability reaches out across the organization. And I think there's a lot of conversation at the last meeting. What we have is what I would refer to as a decentralized model. Some cities have centralized where it's a sustainability department and it has, you know, staff people in the department. We have what I would refer to as a decentralized model. We've got a sustainability coordinator, we've got stormware, stormwater management people, we've got equity people, we've got an active transportation person, we have a building facilities person that was funded of sustainability projects. So we have sustainability teammates either doing work a hundred percent or a portion of their work throughout the organization. What that spreadsheet was, was our first attempt to start to quantify and help give a picture of how far sustainability goes across the entire organization. So as part of this work, we'll continue to do that. But we do, to my earlier comment, also need to understand these new initiatives. And I think Administrators showed them on her budget presentation. When we think about the funding we've gotten just this year alone as it relates to, and what's in the hopper related to energy and urban forestry for, you know, decarbonization and heat island effects and air quality and transportation-related initiatives, really understanding what it's going to take to stand those up as well as things like the Economic Vitality Fund, forty million of that is targeted towards housing. And so what we want to do in terms of creating alignment with this ask and what we might ultimately bring forward to you in, in that program. So it's just an example of, there's a lot of integrated work and conversation that needs to happen here. And so I, I do think that it would be premature to land on a specific recommendation for a staff without having a better understanding of what the state's going to do, what we bring forward and what you approve in terms of some of these other initiatives. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, that helps a lot. Thank you.
Could you take a second with the different options and just talk through, I mean, you've listed sort of what the options are, but just a sentence or two about what gap they would be filling?
Sure, let me, let me go to the options and so we try.
Just point out that the list isn't the recommended option.
The potential options, excuse me.
The list that's included under options include.
Sure. Again, when we met, just thinking about where there might be gaps. So a Department of Energy fellow program that we believe would be specific, I mean, there are specific requirements from the Department of Energy when you apply for that. And so it, it really is about energy efficiency. So we see that as a perfect candidate to help support, educate and promote what dollars might be out there and how people can be smart about, and whether property owner, business owner, commercial property, how they can be smart about what energy efficiency initiatives they could do on their property.
Pause there. How accessible are those? Fellowship. That was, yeah, like, are there, is there significant sources? And what's the timeline?
That application, that application is due in January. We would expect a couple of months. They want to push it out pretty early in 2024. So I think we would, we would hear by second quarter on that. And it's an eighteen-month program.
And highly competitive or?
It's, if you want to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you all. The application for the fellow is due in March after our EECBG final application is due in January. It's a separate fellowship program specifically to support EECBG communities receiving funding and what they have outlined within their application. There's thirty-four to thirty-six fellows that will be awarded to host sites across the country. And I know the city has hosted quite a few fellows in other areas. So I think just given our background with that type of work, we would be able to put together a competitive application for that.
Okay, thanks for that. All right. So the Sustainability Internship Partnership with DMC, I understand that space, how about the consultant services contract? And how did you land on the seventy to a hundred thousand dollars? Sorry, just trying to really get my head around this.
Sure, absolutely. And, and I might lean into Lauren to get, provide more detail. But we currently have, have CE under contract to do some education marketing in that hotline that we spoke about.
Yep.
And this would be to really build that out even more, basically expand the hotline. It's, the hotline is a limited number of hours under the current contract because we have so much available, particularly through RPU. They have one advisor devoted to residential and four, five devoted to commercial. So it would, right now, it's just supplementing that call center that they provide. So it really expands that hotline throughout the year. So that is, and so depending on what the final scope of services would be, how many hours we decided, how many days, how long for that hotline, that's, that's the range for that contract. The fourth option is the International City County Management Association, that ICMA, they offered a fellow program to local governments. So these are individuals that go through a fellow program through the, this international organization. They are people who are interested in local government. Many of them want, hope to become either deputies or city administrators, but they get their sea legs working in specific areas, whether it's finance or sustainability or engineering. And so this is a program, again, I think we would qualify very nicely for, we'd be very competitive. This really, similar to other programs through similar organizations, depends on the pool of fellows that apply that year and if they select you as a community. So that really is just dependent on who, who cycles through and if we align with their area of focus.
But that is us funding.
That is us funding at a hundred percent.
Okay.
Correct.
And then the position, I'm really wanting to hear your perspective in Ms. Johnson's. What exactly would that be doing? What would be the goals and benefits?
Sure, so I think there is a little bit of flexibility with this position on what it would be doing. We really focused on what we thought we heard from the council in October. And that is that this person, this position would really focus on pushing out information, education around IRA dollars specifically for residential. But should you want us to expand and further supplement what RP was already doing with their commercial advisors, we could have that conversation. We really felt that to maximize this position would be to put them in with the Community Development Department, Irene's Housing and Neighborhood Services Division already do a lot of work in this space with our Community Development Block Grant Dollars. They, and with the rental program that they manage, there's a lot of connection to landlords, property owners who are coming for rehab dollars through CDPG that there could be alignment with doing energy efficiency work if they're also coming and approaching the city about just general remodel or the relationships that we have with landlords helping to push information. I mean, there's thousands of landlords helping to push information out about how they might make their property more efficient. So we really see this as just a supplement to the work that, that Irene's Housing and Neighborhood Services Team is already doing. And, and our understanding from the council directive was that it would be focused on promoting IRA rebates.
And I just want to clarify, the recommendation is not to add that in 2024. You just approved a budget that doesn't have room for that. That would be to flush it out and consider it as the supplemental 2025 budget.
Got it. Thank you. Other questions, Mayor?
Well, you kind of hit on my stuff there. So I, I did want to know a little bit more about the ICMA timeline since we got the one for the fellows for the city applying January here in maybe early second quarter, hopefully, and then have someone for eighteen months, similar, I think, to the one we have now perhaps that's working on disabilities in our community, kind of a, they would move here, stay here for eighteen months.
The ICMA fellow program?
No, the first one.
Oh, the Department of Energy?
Yeah. That's, it would work similarly to the one, the fellow. Yeah. That's, it would work similarly to the one, the fellow we have now. And I just want to point out a fellow slightly different than an intern.
The Department of Energy is an intern program, the ICMA is a fellow program.
It's a, it's a fellowship for the Department of Energy?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's an energy fellow program. So then the one with ICMA, I was wondering what the timeline on that was too. Or were you thinking, try the first one, if we don't get it, then go to the second one? Or are they both, what's the timeline on applying for those?
I don't have the timeline on the ICMA, was not able to get that information.
Okay. But we do have two options for fellows, is kind of what I'm seeing there, but we'll-
Potentially, yes.
Start this one in January, that was the recommendation?
The application?
The recommendation is the Department of Energy fellow program and the intern program.
The two interns with Luther.
Expand that. What's not in here that Lauren reminded me is we also get a green core member a year.
I was just going to ask, how come the Green Corps isn't represented here?
Yeah, I, that, yeah, I missed that.
And we do, you know, we always have the opportunity to apply for another student through our German delegation as well. There's a little bit of a challenge with housing. I've housed the intern for two years and probably will not house another one, although they were both delightful. But after two years, I think we'd need to find someone else to, to take over that responsibility. But that's an option as well, keep in the back pocket.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. So what if we apply for these interns and fellows and we're not granted? What, what, what do we do then?
If we were not successful, I mean, I, I don't have any concern. I believe that we will be highly competitive for Department of Energy, but we've always been successful in getting interns with a DMC through the Luther, Luther College program. We've gotten interns, they've been exceptional. They've done a lot of work in benchmarking air quality and green asset mapping. So I don't think it's a question. We, and we, we've become a city, a desirable city for that intern program. So I, I feel very confident that we will get the interns through Luther College. And I think we'll be very competitive for Department of Energy. If not, we can come back and hopefully by that time, we'll understand what the state wants to do. And we can bring forward that information. And I think as Administrator Zolm said, any, any decision beyond what we've recommended here does have a significant budget impact. And so I would suggest that it be done through the supplemental budget process as Administrator Zolm had suggested.
So would that include like contingency funds then?
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, councilmembers, the contingency funds are things, it could come back in that way. Most often contingency funds are requested by staff based on things that happen throughout the year. So for example, if we weren't able to achieve those, the fellowship program, or if the ICMA fellow, which is slightly more of a match from the city, then that is something that staff could bring forward to be able to utilize contingency, but for a full-time position. I think that of the caliber of $100,000 or $120,000, typically, we don't bring those in the mid, mid-year for city council approval of contingency, because they have implications for future year budgets, even if they're a limited-term appointment. Be unlikely that you'd be hiring something as a limited-term appointment and get a high-level person for a very short period of time. Those are just challenging postings to get great candidates for.
Thank you.
Question?
Well, I think he has a motion, so.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so just to address some of the couple of concerns brought in open comment with the, you know, not just individual, but of course, all aspects, like we have developers and landlords and advertising. And I, I've been looking through this, is with the topic, you know, with individual access, is that going to be really a focus as well to make sure that all people, struggling people who are, people who are busy, have this, this outreach to know what is available for them?
That's what we understood the direction was, was support to residents to tap into IRA dollars. So that would be the focus for anything that you recommended for a position.
Okay. But in addition to residents and individuals, companies, businesses, making sure that this is connected to everyone in Rochester, is that a focus as well?
Yeah, we currently do that. And it's, that's the services RPU currently provides. We also provide that now through the work that we've contracted CE to do. And as I mentioned, the hotline, that's available for all.
And then with the question about future buildings, is that something that's part of this as well, making, looking at future development with all the foreseeable growth of Rochester, that the, you know, materials and processes are as clean as possible?
So you currently have that in your, in your policy when there's assistance, assistance provided for development? For example, your TIF policy includes sustainability incentives. So that is something that's already incorporated into your policy. We have had a volunteer benchmarking program for a number of years now. Lauren and, and Kevin Bright, when he was here, worked very hard on the benchmarking program and outreach to businesses. The state of Minnesota, of course, has passed a mandatory benchmarking. So RPU is already working on that. That's one of the pending asks that we have at the state level, use $400,000 to help stand up that benchmarking program, which will hit commercial properties. So trying, it, it's going to come from a, a variety of ways. And that's where the intersectionality of all this work, we're trying to really understand. And wouldn't want to get out in front of it with a recommendation without really understanding these things roll out, and as they become real in terms of the benchmarking requirements and funding and state funding, that we're, we are really maximizing, capitalizing it the, the best and most efficiently possible. So.
Thank you. Motion? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I'd like to move to direct the staff to pursue the Department of Energy internship program and continue with the city DMC sustainability internship program using the EECBG as the funding source.
Second?
Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, again, I've spent some time on this with both some public, but also with staff. And I, the obvious, first one of this would have been, you know, could we get to the point of saying, let's try to find the money to, to fund a part-time or maybe even longer-term staff? And I, I just couldn't get there, considering the state of, the state right now, where things are with IRA, it just didn't seem reasonable. I also looked at funding, just improving the, the department funding without specific ties. And again, it goes against our budgeting principles, and it didn't make sense. I guess I would reserve the idea that, that idea of like, if we do end up with this thing where there's going to be set rules and there, and it really is a clear view that says, this is, this would really leverage, we could really leverage our RPU work on how to get advantage of this. I think those are things we need to look at it going into 2024. I, I think the other thing that going through this last two weeks and kind of looking at this stuff is, I, the group has come and talked to us about these opportunities for the IRA. And I think there are some good opportunities there. And although, even though I like the idea of the city trying to help our residents and our businesses to take advantage of those, I, I can't think of an example where we do work like that right now, and we have some sort of expertise. The closest I can come to is the RPU programs that they have. And again, I, I would, I don't mean I'm totally against experimenting, but I felt it was very experimental, and I couldn't come up with what I'd consider to be the, 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 the key metrics that would say we're being successful, or we're not. It just felt like we were just trying something without knowing if it would work or not. But the other thing that came through with some of this, and, and some of this comes from staff talking about these bigger projects, but the leverage we have with the projects that are coming up are probably much greater than the, than the idea of looking back and saying, what could we have done? And how can we improve things? I mean, I'm still struggle with the idea that we've done a lot of work towards reducing our transportation greenhouse gases, and did a lot of work towards what can we do on our fleets? And we haven't made the progress that I would have liked to make. And some of that I can kind of look at and says, we can get some support on buying electric cars. What we can't get is the infrastructure we need at the scale the city is at. So those are the things that I think are those bigger, bigger things that I hope we can make some progress on. I, I think this is sort of a response to where we are at the end of the year, the same night we're approving a budget to say, what should we do, be doing addition? And I'm hoping, you know, again, let's see where we go from here.
Thank you, Councilmember Keen. I think you have some really good points. And while I'm thrilled about the increased explicit support for this work more broadly, and focus on environment and sustainability and resiliency across our community, and I'm grateful for the outpouring of that strong voice. I think we do need to be thoughtful with our resources, just like we were talking about during the budget discussion. So I absolutely support the interns. And as we start in early 2024 already, our budget discussions for 2025, hopefully that is the window that we'll have a better understanding of where things are at with our state programs to have a discussion about that longer-term investment in potentially a position or increased relationship with our contract partners, or whatever that shape that needs to take. I think there is a space, and, and Ms. Steinhouser, you were talking about it, how we have all these different pieces happening, and they're really exciting and really great, and things that interns would want to work on, which is wonderful. But there's that gap or opportunity to have a more thoughtful integration, or not more, I don't know how to talk about it, a more explicit connection across those initiatives. And I think that's the space that feels most promising to pull it all together and figure out, okay, well, what are we doing? How are we doing this all together across our work? And then encouraging our partners like Mayo Clinic and others that are investing in our community to, to buy into those values as a shared community. I think that's where we can have the most progress, or make the most progress. And I do think there is a space as we start 2024, for this council to think about, is there something more explicit as a sub-bullet of one of our strategic priorities, or something that just states, you know, not, not just environmental stewardship as a principle, which we clearly have, but something around committing resources or committing to an integrated approach to environmental initiatives at the federal state level, whatever it is. Just I think there's some space to have that at a policy level commitment that I'd be excited to talk to my colleagues about. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I'm going to go a little rogue.
Oh, boy.
I'm wondering why we're not utilizing perhaps Institute on the Environment from University of Minnesota, some of their interns or fellows, or better yet, perhaps Yale 360, some institutions that have some really bold, forward, and unbound ideas about sustainability. Although I'm super jazzed and excited about bold, forward, and unbound, it's going to be one of the most extractive things that we can do to our planet to implement that $5 billion piece of infrastructure for our community. There's two sides to every coin. And when I just listened to hear you, when I just listened to you mention your comments, Council President, sustainability and resiliency is a mindset. There's no amount of policy that we can put in place if we're not going to enforce it. For instance, we approved the Urban Forest Master Plan a couple of weeks ago. But in the year that that was presented to us, we have lost 2% of our tree canopy. We already have 26, 27% of tree canopy across our city, 65% of which is on private lots, not in the public realm. How are we actually going to implement sustainability and resiliency policies if we continue day-to-day to consume at the level that we consume? I appreciate the dedication to energy and building EV chargers, but I can't afford to replace my 2015 Prius. It's the best I can do right now, and it's probably going to be the best I can do for a long time. So if I'm sort of in the median, I don't know how many other people can afford electric vehicles. What's more important is that we educate and we work towards a future where we can all live responsibly, where we can all live at a capacity that doesn't take more than we can replace. If any of you happen to follow Earth overshoot, like I do, the pandemic cranked us up to a production level that was ridiculous. As much as everybody appreciated curbside restaurants, the amount of styrofoam and plastic that was produced just to get curbside going across our country is absolutely astounding. We blew our decreasing levels of consumption and production totally out of the water during the pandemic because of all of the things that were produced. So as much as I applaud what we're doing, and I appreciate the staff work that's going into this, the Sustainability and Resiliency Task Force came out with some really great examples of what we could do. And the mayor put that task force together, I believe in 2021, April of 21 is, I think, when they finished their recommendations. Not, not much has changed. And if we're talking about greenhouse gases, we really got to be looking at the food system. It's one of the biggest things we've got that's contributing to greenhouse gases right now. I know we're driving around in our vehicles, but we, we really need to take a more holistic view. I'm almost done. I'm almost done, guys. A really take a more holistic view as to how, how we're approaching sustainability and resiliency. It really cannot be lip service. And unfortunately, I kind of feel like it is right now. And that, that distresses me a little bit. So I like what we're doing. I think it's a great small step forward. What did, what did Glenn say when he landed on the road? One small step for something, another step for mankind. We need to kind of do something like that. So I'm for this. I think it's great. But I consider it a really small step forward. And I think we need to, we need to put some more, link some more cargo boxes on the chain. Add analogy, but yeah. Reduce the, reduce the chain.
Thanks for those thoughtful comments, Councilmember Kirkpatrick. Councilmember Wall?
Thank you. I am grateful to the three speakers in the open comment who were commenting favorably on this proposal. In the October meeting, in an effort to speak about the importance of routing all increases of staffing through a thorough process, particularly as regards the possible addition of a staff person to support sustainability efforts in Rochester, I misspoke while thinking on my feet, proving that neither my mind nor feet were working well. I used an extremely poor example of paving streets in gold. It was a stupid analogy, and I apologize to the council and to the community for speaking in such a way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wall. Councilmember Dennis?
Hey, thank you. I have to echo a lot of things that Councilmember Kirkpatrick said. I think that we definitely have to have that mindset of sustainability. I also believe that one of the biggest roles of council is to make a better future for residents in Rochester. And I've always been a huge advocate for, well, obviously, as a school teacher and as a volunteer for children, children are our future. So children are definitely an allegiance of mine. I feel with the finite time that we have on council and on this planet, the only planet we have, we definitely need to invest and, and have what we can do, whatever we can do ripple through generations and make it a better world for everyone. So I, I hear what Councilmember Keen said, you know, what more, or what could we do, or what more could we do? And I don't want to look back and say that, you know, we said a lot of feel-good things, you know, we, we said a lot of these platitudes on how, you know, you know, words that make it look good on paper, but that we actually put feet on the ground and did something. When someone looks at our, our priorities and they look at the checkbook of Rochester to say, hey, you know, they invested in people, they invested in a position that is focused on saving our, you know, helping save our planet. And so I am a huge supporter of funding a staff person who, like a resident mentioned, will just, you know, can imagine, can you imagine, like, what are the possibilities of someone who's focused on, you know, making, you know, environmental benefit to our city and our community? So I would just want to put that in there. I, I'm supportive, of course, of this plan, but also I would really hope that we keep that notion of having a full-time staff, because Lauren does a phenomenal job. I mentioned before, my, I've witnessed some of the things she does of many, many people in, in one position. And I just hope that we keep that in part of this plan. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely look forward to those future discussions and, and the first quarter, early second in 2024. Ms. Steinhouser?
Yes, thank you, President Carlson. Just a couple of comments I, I forgot to mention earlier. And to your question about legis, about a policy, I would say there are a number of documents that helped guided us in, as we did this analysis. You have-
I would say there are a number of documents that helped guided us in as we did this analysis. You have a lot of language already included in your legislative policies, as you've mentioned, in your strategic priorities and your value statements. The adoption of your Energy Action Plan, your emission reduction goals. So we, I do feel like we have some really good policy direction that you have already provided. In reference to the sustainability plan, it was great work by a large community task force that looked at the triple bottom line of sustainability. And what's important to remember about that plan is that plan is meant to be a 10 to 15 year plan. There are 134 strategies, 134, so about 60 are which we're focused on in the first five years. So it is a plan that has short term, midterm and long term goals. And I think sometimes that gets lost when we talk about the sustainability plan. And lastly, I do want to say that this is a team effort, right? So as I mentioned before, while we are, we have a decentralized model, we all work very closely together. And I do want to make a, I do want to correct the statement that was made and it is not to take away from Lauren's work at all. Lauren would tell you this herself. She does a great job. She's part of a team that, that helps apply for funding. She, she doesn't single handedly do this. We come together. Some teammates come with research. Some team or teammates come with the writing of skillset. Some teammates come helping do advocacy. It is a team effort. There's no one individual person that has helped to bring in the millions of dollars that Rochester has received. We are a wonderful team that works well together. And again, not to take away from Lauren, because she's an important part of that team. But I, I would not feel right if I didn't acknowledge that there are a lot of other teammates that collectively we have all raised that money, not individually.
Anything else? All right. So ready to vote on the motion to approve pursuing the two, the top two fellowship opportunities Luther and at Department of Energy. Yeah. All right. All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Well, thank you, everyone for being here. We will move on to our ordinance reading. We have one second. Oh, no, excuse me. We won't. We had one pulled item F4. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Dennis. It's the appointments to boards and commissions and invite her to share a comment about why she pulled the item and then a motion.
Okay, thank you. So I have tried to reach out ahead of time. I know that there has been some issues with the mayor meeting with me. So I'm sad and I couldn't get all these questions answered ahead of time. Excuse me, but I did want to bring some clarification of this process. Some residents have reached out and I understand the process. We, the mayor mentioned the Medal of Honor program and how it's, people are nominated, excuse me, for the, I'm sorry, Medal of Honor, mayor, mayor, the mayor program for, to honor individuals in our community. The people are nominated by people and have a selection committee. When, when we look at the appointments to the boards and commissions, I feel looking at names, I don't know everybody on, on this name, on this list. And so I have to just trust and say, I, I, I trust the mayor has done her due diligence and, and has found these individuals to, to sit on very important committees. And I just don't understand the process and I feel a little bit like you rubber stamp as a council without really knowing much about these individuals. I've talked to other council members from the past who've had a chance to look at some of the resumes, some of the questions that are asked. So I'm pulling just this to just have more transparency on the process of these appointments. What questions are asked to these candidates? And, and just more of a selection, yeah, process. So that I pulled in for transparency for residents. Thank you.
Martin, if you just take a minute to share the process that
Absolutely. I, we mentioned it here at the board table. We put it in the newspapers. We put it online when there are openings. People apply. We had many applicants for each of these positions. They have a portal through the city's website that is up and they can apply actually anytime through the year, not necessarily just at the time that there's an opening. And then when there is an opening, we look through the names. I select from the application, which includes questions about why they want to serve, what they think they have to offer on the positions that they're applying for, as well as a resume. I looked through those and then I select a number. It can be anywhere from two to four people for each of the positions. I do interviews online, asking them what they hope to contribute, a little tell me about yourself kind of thing. How long, you know, what, what do you? What do you, what are you interested in? Why do you want to serve on this committee so that they can expand beyond what's on that form? Then the, we go through the whole interviews after everyone's interviewed. I sort of prioritize them. I talk to the staff on occasion. But I also attend many of the meetings, either virtually or in person to try to get a feel for what's needed. I try to keep a gender balance. I try to keep a racial and ethnicity balance on the boards and commissions as much as is possible based on who's there. So then taking that information as well as information that either the chair of the committee or the staff might give me about. I'll give an example of the bike ped committee. Everybody in our committee are bikers. We need some people who walk. So I looked through the applications and of the applicants that and most, all of our applicants are lovely people. I will just be very clear about that. We always have lovely applicants. I look through and I find someone who might have a, a, a good applicant that might have had an interest in the pedestrian part, and then I will bring that for name forward. So it's a combination of all those things that's done after the interview process. And then I put the names forward and when I became mayor, we added a new component for the city council because two of our council members, Nick Campion and Michael Wojcik, wanted to know more. So we do put a slight, it used to be there were no descriptions at all about the candidates, but now we do put a, a one or two sentences, all they asked for, description of the candidate and why they would be good for the committee. And then that's brought before you and is approved typically through a consent agenda process. And then they are notified, they come in and do a swearing in process. They take a conflict of, they have a conflict of interest form they have to fill out and then they're notified by staff and the committee chairs to come in for the meetings that will begin in January.
Councilmember Keen.
Yeah, I want to move approval of the 12 mayoral appointments as presented on page 35.
Second.
Right, Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Palmer.
Well, I'll just confirm what the, the mayor is saying and, and I have pulled people off the list and and I have looked at the list and tried to figure out why or who and she does a very good job of trying to, to put the right person in and she calls people and say, maybe this committee would be better. I commend the, the mayor for, for doing a good job with our, our committee. So.
Councilmember Dennis.
So I just, so are the interviews recorded? The ones, you know, you said you interview every applicant. Are they?
For clarification, I did not say I interviewed.
Or not every, okay, maybe not everyone, but are they the ones chosen for interview process? Are they documented, recorded?
Of course not.
No. Okay. Well, and, and are you the only one to, I'm just, I'm just curious because I know.
My responsibility falls to the mayor's office for those interviews. I do them and I bring them forward to you.
I was just curious because I know the selection committee and other, other ways of, I know that's you know, something that could be done in the future as well. But I, I, I've gone through and tried to look up every single person. And, and it's, it is a big trust thing. Just, you know, we, we, we vote on this. So we're the ones who are approving this as in the city council. And I just want to make sure I fully understand and know exactly what I'm voting for. So I, I think these individuals are, what I know of them are wonderful and I'm really excited to have them on the boards and commissions this year for the future. So congratulations to all, everyone on the list, but thank you for answering the questions. Thank you.
Thank you to those of you who put your name forward to be considered. It's really a commitment to our city and I value that tremendously. All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Now we are moving on to us one second reading of an ordinance and I will turn it over to Michael Spindler Craig.
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, one second reading K1. An ordinance removing proposed R2X zoning districts from amended zoning map and rezoning parcels consistent with the comprehensive plan and amending ordinance number 4478, known as the Unified Development Code of the City of Rochester, Minnesota.
Move approval. Second.
Councilmember Keen.
Nothing to add.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carries. With Councilmember Kirkpatrick voting nay. All right. Other business tonight. Councilmember Dennis.
Thank you. I do have some questions. I think I'm just gonna put an email form and send it out about we had a closed session today and the, the concept or the notion of attorney client privilege. And there's been some questions from people on what is a client, you know, because I mean, I've heard this, you know, confidentiality in emails and things. Not, I'm not talking about the closed session. I mean, that's definitely a closed session. But in other aspects, there has been that term attorney client privilege. And I know that I guess I could, I don't know. I just wanted to maybe have that defined right now is who is the client in that term?
If, if the state statute outlines what is appropriate for a closed session.
Okay, well.
Privilege. We follow data, Minnesota data practices for what can be a closed session and then Minnesota data practices for when and if the closed session becomes available, the timeline for that. And so it's really not.
Okay, I'm sorry to clarify.
Any client privilege.
Yeah, this, my question's not about closed sessions at all. That just spurred this question that has been asked on several occasions. And when you get an email from the city attorney or I imagine other attorneys in the city, you see a, a privacy, a confidentiality notice at the bottom of the email. That's attorney client privilege. And so just an emails and situation, who is the client? Because I, I understand is, is it the city of Rochester? Is it, because I've, I've heard before, it's not universal in all emails.
Not universal in all emails? I'm sorry, I don't, I don't.
Well, so like if, if a resident wants to do a data poll and poll emails, can they pull an email that you have sent? Because there is often your, the confidentiality notice on the bottom of the emails. I believe for transparency purposes in government, we should allow residents to have an idea of what correspondence is being done in their city. And so I just wanted to know what defines a confidentiality of the attorney client in your emails? Just curious.
What defines the confidentiality of attorney? Client? I'm sorry, what, what is your question?
Just trying to ask, why would an email be confidential?
Yeah, I mean, what, because I mean, some are, are and some are not. And I think it's kind of at your whim. Is that correct of what's confidential and what's not confidential? Or is all?
Generally, yeah. So generally not at, at a whim. Yeah. So generally when it has to do with legal matters, legal communication with the council that requires confidentiality. Yes. And you have seen that in a few different spaces at times from me when I'm communicating with the council on a legally sensitive matter. I think there, there maybe has been some confusion, perhaps on, on your part about a disclaimer that's on the bottom of the email that doesn't have anything to do with attorney client privilege. And you mentioned that again tonight. So I, I think there's maybe just some confusion there. Otherwise, yes, it's used strategically consistent with the law when I'm communicating with all of you on legally sensitive matters.
Okay, but not normal emails back and forth. Like if there's a city question, a legal city question, you know, is this, you know, appropriate or this is this fall under our statute? Those kind of questions are not confidential. Correct? If, if like, if I, if as council member sends an email to a city attorney, we're not allowed to connect with any other attorney, but just with you. Do you? Then that is not confidential, correct? So the disclaimer on the bottom of emails. I, I guess I just want to.
Depends on the Minnesota data practices. We release any data requests based on Minnesota data practices. Those established by state law. And those are the rules that we follow for any data request.
All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, maybe I'm understanding what Councilmember Dennis is getting at since you explained that, but there seems to be a clear difference to me. When we get a private email, it says in the subject line bolded. I think it says attention or privileged information, attorney client privilege, something, I mean, you've seen, we've all seen that in the subject line. And I, I guess I take that as an alert that, okay, this is confidential. I'm not talking with anybody about this. But on my personal email and even my city email, I have a confidentiality notice at the bottom of my email. I put it there. I wrote the text for that because I consider who I send my emails to, they are meant for who I'm sending my emails to. So if that person wants to forward it around and there's a confidentiality notice on the base of it, I may find them to be in fact breaking the confidentiality of what I shared with them. I also remove it in certain emails. Sometimes I remove the whole Rochester city signature because I just want to shorten the thread. So what in particular are you talking about? I'm, I'm a little confused too. I'm curious, just trying to support transparency. So I think I feel anything in my email is available for people to know what their representative is emailing. And so I find, I mean, obviously if I email a constituent, a resident, I mean, but I feel like, you know, I want to be transparent. I don't have anything to hide and any secrets. So I was just wondering when it comes to that notion, notion in government on what cannot be given to the press, what cannot be given to others. That was my question. It's just to define what is a client and what's, you know, the privilege, the confidentiality, understandably, what you're saying, bold, you know, things that are legal happening. Yes, of course, we want to be, you know, sensitive to things in closed sessions, of course.
All right, point of order.
I think it's really important to provide some context that if you are sharing directly emails or not encouraging people to go through the data practice request form that we have, which is how we protect ourselves in assuring that we're releasing information in accordance with Minnesota data practices, which actually has protections for individuals, that that could be something that you would maybe want to think twice about.
All right, can we move on? Is there anything else?
I have one more, one more. I just, because of what, you know, this month is Universal Human Rights Month. And I believe today was, well, there's International Day of Persons with Disabilities that we just had. And today there was a celebration at the Rochester Art Center, which I think is wonderful. I've, I've been incredibly involved with people from all ability levels and, and just wanted to share that it is very, very difficult for people to be advocates, to come to council meetings, to speak up, to have the energy, the finances when they are struggling in a society that's not always meant or designed for accessibility. So I just wanted to put that out there too, because we just had the celebration and today was literally the celebration at the art center that to, to make sure that, you know, we just celebrate all abilities. And if some are hidden, like I mentioned with my ADHD and autism and brain injuries and things that are hidden disabilities, some are physical and other many, many spectrums, but I just want to advocate for the celebration of all abilities this month and hopefully every month. Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Right, all in favor, say aye. I'll oppose, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.